I see the recording light.
And it's going to take me just a moment to do the Facebook. So just bear with me for one second.
Janine's a one man show tonight, so we need her for the she's already got the flag up and everything, man, she's on it. Randy's got off is off this week, so. We'll go ahead and get started. The live stream will follow us here in a moment. So, good evening. I'd like to call to order. The April 27th Portage City Council regular meeting in pursuit of the governor's stay home, stay safe order. The city council is conducting the sea this evening's meeting via Zoom. We've published links to this meeting on our website and on the agenda and also provided meeting for call in numbers for members of the public to participate. So with that, we're to the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have a published agenda. Are there any amendments to this proposed for this evening's agenda? And if there's not, is there a motion to approve the published agenda?
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as published.
The motion by Councilor Clausen, second by Councilmember Luca Reli approving the agenda as presented. Any discussion of the agenda? You're none, all in favor of approving the agenda? Please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, the agenda has been set. We're to our first citizen comment period, which is for items on this evening's agenda. Janine, do we have anyone from the public wishing to provide comment at this time?
The only person I see right now is Jackie Brown. So Jackie.
Jackie's a staff member, so I doubt that she's wanting to comment.
Well, Jackie will need to be brought in for the presentation.
Okay.
We're not far from that. So seeing that there's no other members of the public. I will close the first public comment period and we have a second public comment period at the end of the meeting if anybody joins us. So with that, we're to our consent agenda. So a motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Okay. Yeah, Councilmember Dean are making a motion to approve the consent agenda, the second by Councilmember Clausen. Discussion of the consent to item consent items. You're none, all in favor of approving the consent items? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You meant consent agendas, items are approved and Janine, if you can let Jackie in to the meeting so that we can move on with our presentation. There's Jackie and Mr. Dorsey. If you're ready, you can proceed.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I'm having a little bit of a issue here. There you go. I hit a wrong button and everybody disappeared. So, okay, so this is going to be a tag team, I think, between myself, Jackie and Noah. And so I think Jackie's gonna get started. So whoever's running this meeting, Jackie needs to have the ability to share her screen and we're going to be going over the water CIP presentation as discussed previously. That we would be bringing forth. The we talked about.
Dorsey.
Yeah.
Sorry, that was the Facebook live streaming. We're up now. I just forgot to mute it.
Okay, yeah, I was getting like a delay. So we, I think if the work study Katie Isaacson prepared the water CFC methodology. And the follow up to that was we were gonna bring forth the the CIP. So I guess with that Jackie, go ahead and bring up your PowerPoint and I believe you're gonna do part of it and Noah's gonna do part of it.
Yes, that's my understanding. Okay, so can everyone see my screen?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, great. So I've been asked to talk this evening about the Water System Capital Improvement Program. And this is the capital improvement program over the next 10 years to the water system. Our water system, water system planning requirements required by the State Department of Health Office of Drinking Water are such that we can demonstrate capacity planned for addressing present and future needs, which is what the capital improvement program is all about. And it also provides us with eligibility for funding and all projects must be included in an approved plan with DOH approval, or we have to go out and ask for approvals separately, which is kind of a long drawn out process. So you'll notice that there are lots and lots of projects that we've put in this 10 year plan so that anything that we think might come up in the next 10 years, we won't have to ask for special approval on. So because of that, I grouped them into these five categories here to make it easier to digest because there are a total of 24 projects. And now today we identified where we may have to add one more project that won't be a part of the CFC conversation. It would only be out of rates, but we want to make sure that it's in the plan. So we don't have to ask for special approval later on. So the first component is the source. Here are the projects for sources. You're all familiar with well 13. These numbers out here, these values are the total amount that we estimate the project to be. And of course, a lot of well 13 has already been paid for. And we are looking at getting another loan for the for a lot more of the project. Then well 11, of course, is to replace the existing wells at McCormick Woods. Well 12 is the new source that McCormick Communities is working on for us. Although those have kind of been that has kind of been stopped right now, as has 13 because of the foster and water rights issue. And then this upgrade to well seven, well seven is a flowing artesian down at the corner of South Kit, or I mean Portage Boulevard and Bay Street. And it needs to have some upgrades in the next few years. The last thing on here is well 10. The reason it's grayed out is because it's not included in the total amount because it's beyond the 10 year horizon, but I wanted to put it in the projects anyway, just in case we got everything else done and we're able to work on it. And then the last thing here, of course, is the foster mitigation projects. Then we go to storage. This 580 zone tank, that's the one that McCormick Communities is building for us right now. The 390 zone tank is another tank at the Sedgwick site that we're proposing. So that we can make sure that we have enough storage in the 390 zone and then the 660 tank is proposed to be built in the next few years by McCormick Communities to create that pressure zone. Then we've been moving on to transmission distribution. These first two are the transmission main and booster station to intertie the two systems at Old Clifton Road. And then, I'm sorry, this first is the transmission main from the new tank to to McCormick Woods existing. Then here's the transmission main and booster station on Old Clifton. And then this 580 to 660 booster station, we're proposing and working with McCormick Communities that rather than try and find another hill or build an elevated tank, we're going to create a booster station at the base of this tank. And it basically will create the create the the pressure zone for the 660 without having to have a tank in a separate location. Then continuing transmission and distribution, we have the five, the 390 to 580 booster station first lift out on the Glenwood side or the south side of the system because through hydraulic modeling, we've discovered that there has to actually be two lifts out there rather than just one because of the concentration of population in the Stetson Heights area. So this is the first lift. This is the second lift. And then here's the transmission name through Stetson Heights. Then lastly, here's the 390 zone booster station that we're proposing at the Sedgwick site in order to boost the pressure up on that hill. Finally, or not finally, but then we go into system upgrades. This is our telemetry system. That's how the tanks tell the well, the well pumps to turn on. It's how we can Tony or the crew can be in the shop or on their phones and see what pumps are running or get alarms if something's going wrong. This is the communication. And that's true for the water system and the sewer system. Then the military booster station, currently, this is the only booster station we have between the 260 and 390 pressure zones. And it just needs to have some upgrades. It's it hasn't been worked on for several years and needs to have the pumps changed out and and some other work done on it. Oops, whoops, whoops, whoops. Didn't mean to do that. Okay, then we get into pressure reducing stations. This is pressure reducing stations identified in the hydraulic model to be able to move water between the pressure zones as we need them. And then here are main replacements needed per the hydraulic model. Now that we have a really robust hydraulic model that BHC has developed, we've been able to identify several inefficiencies and deficiencies in the water system. So that will clean those up. And what we're proposing on that is $500,000 per year for four years. Then lastly, the infrastructure replacements, these are all funded out of rates because they're replacing current current facilities to improve our reliability and make sure that we have adequate fire flow and the ability to move the water around through valves and hydrants to get water where we need it. And with that, I would take any questions that anybody has before I pass the gavel over to Noah.
Questions about the projects that Jackie's discussed?
I know I went through them really fast, but I'd be happy to discuss any of them that you might have questions about.
Utility committee's seen this information probably numerous times, but
Yes.
It's not, it is new information to some council members.
And the one project that we may be adding is coming out of the Storm Drainage Comprehensive Plan Capital Improvement Project. The what they call the the Boy Scout Bridge at Kendall. That's actually our water mains and that needs to be removed. So that's a project to to underground and get rid of that above ground crossing. I think that's a project that again, that's that's existing facility rate payer. It doesn't come into the CFC conversation, but I think we probably need to add that to the list.
Noah, let's hear about the financing.
Okay, hey Jackie, can you slide down? And then could you also maximize it? So from current slide, click that button there and make the screen a little bit larger? Just so they can see the full screen.
It goes to my other screen when I do that, Noah. Sorry.
Let me see here. Maybe I can share my screen.
There, how about that?
That's better.
That's a little better. Okay, so we'll we'll start there unless the mayor wants me to try to enlarge in the screen at all. Is this good, Rob?
You guys, I'm good with it. Are you? But I've got a much bigger monitor. You guys, what what you're seeing, Becky, can you see it? Okay? Beck nodded her head.
Okay, then we'll just get started here. So what we put together here is the summary of the Water System Capital Improvement Plan that Jackie just went through. And and this is listed from project CIP number one through 23. And it describes our estimated cost in one column. And the next column to the right, the percentage that would be attributable to the CFC calculation, which then moves into the far right column, which is the CFC portion. Now again, Katie Isaacson was just here, I believe, last council meeting and talked about the capital facility charge. So let's just re re review that real quick. Capital facility charges are one time fees paid at the time of development and intended to recover a share of the cost of the system capacity needed to serve growth. They serve two primary purposes. First, to provide equity between the existing and new customers. And then to provide a funding source for the system improvements as growth occurs. With most of the CFC calculations, the framework is generally characterized as appropriate capital costs divided by the appropriate customer base with numerous adjustments based on policy factors that we consider when we go through this exercise. So I wanted to lay that out here because what's important about this table is we start with our total water system capital improvement plan at roughly $50 million or the 49.87 million dollars. And as we applied our growth factor to it or our projects attributable attributable to growth, we identified that $33.9 million of our total $50 million list is for growth related projects. Okay. And I believe we talked about this last time, this one third, two thirds of our capital system plan. And so that 33 and my call it 34 million, just to make the numbers easy to follow through the math here, the $34 million is a piece of the new project growth that goes into the calculation. So Jackie, could you move on to the next slide? So when I started by talking about the CFC calculation and appropriate capital costs divided by, and I'll start with the denominator for now, because once we get into the alternative scenarios, I'm going to change the denominator slightly. But the appropriate capital costs are defined as the current facility costs that 32 and a half million dollars, which we refer to as the buy in of our current facilities. And the new CFC project costs, the growth factor that we just identified on the other page, that roughly $34 million. The combination of the current facilities and the new growth facilities equals 66.3 million dollars. So that is the value of capital costs that goes into the calculation. So Jackie, move on to next slide. All right, so that's 66.3 million dollars is the numerator in all the scenarios for calculating the CFC. And so I'm gonna start with the first alternative, the alternative A, the average cost per ERU. This is how the city has approached it in the past. And and this is, I believe, how we approached it with the sewer CFC. What you can see here, if you if I could curse my mouth over this, you'd see total ERUs at the top of this table at 9,170. For this for this value, we've identified 5,672 to be for current facility ERU users. And then we have a planned ERU growth in in accordance with our water system plan of that 3498. So those two numbers equals that 9,170 ERUs that we will use for the calculation. So for this alternative A, the simple math is taking that 66.3 million dollars divided by the 9,170 ERUs to arrive at our average cost fee of $7,236. On top of that, we add in the state BNO tax, which we would have to remit back to the state to get to a total water CFC per ERU under this methodology of 7,345. Now, right below there, you see I have a value net to the city in the McCormick area. So we have several developer agreements with McCormick. Once all the agreements are fully executed in the area, we have to subtract off 1250 of our net and remit that to the various parties in that area, which leaves us with a net to the city for the houses in that area of 5,0986. So I just want to pause there and take questions on alternative A because that's the easiest methodology to walk through. And so once we fully understand that, the next two will will scrub a little bit differently. So are there any questions on that, Beck?
Yeah, um, that 5986 that net to the city, that is just for the McCormick Woods area. Any infill in other areas with the city, we would collect the 7345.
Correct. That would be the net to the city in the other areas.
Okay.
I'm not seeing any other questions from any other council members, so I will move on here. So I think the the first alternative is the easiest to kind of wrap your mind around as far as what you're doing. You're taking that total 66 million divided by this total ERU value to arrive at our average cost fee. The next alternative B, again, that we're calling this the allocated growth cost per ERU. We're gonna start the total ERUs, total ERUs have not changed. In total, it's still 9,170. The other variables have not changed yet. The current facilities ERUs are 5,672 with plenty of ERU growth. Again, in accordance with our water system plan, 3,498. So we have our total ERUs of 9,170. What changes in this math equation is you have to now take the current facility costs, which isn't displayed in this table. Maybe I should have shown that. But take the current facility costs and divide that by the current facility ERUs. And then you have to take the planned ERU growth and divide that by the growth factor of our new CFC calculation. So Jackie, if you could slide back one slide. If the council thinks about that 3,000 roughly 500 for new growth per the water system plan, we're taking that value and dividing it by that 33 million, nine, nine, 33.9 million dollars. And we're taking the current facility ERUs and dividing it by that $32 million. So you're doing two different math problems and then you're adding them back together to come to our new average cost factor of 15,417. On top of that, we have our BNO tax again to come to a total water CFC per ERU of 15,648 with a net being slightly different after we make those payments out for our commitments. So I want to pause there because again, this is truly allocating the future cost, capital cost of those growth projects amongst the planned ERUs over the next period of time. So did everybody follow that math? Does that make sense? Beck, do you have any questions or Sean?
So the whatever development is going in, they're going to pay the $15,000. Current rate payers are paying no portion of that.
That's not exactly correct. So once we set this CFC, all connections will pay that CFC value. But the difference between A and B is we have two denominators and two equations that we're trying to put a heavier emphasis on growth paying for the growth. So that's where I keep referring back to the 3,500 ERUs. We're dividing that by the 33 million dollars for the new CFC plant. And we're taking our current facility ERUs, the 5,672 and dividing that by our current facilities cost. So it's two different numbers that then sum up to be the 15,000. And that's why you see the larger number because we have 33 million being divided by its growth factor, the ERUs that are going to connect to the system. Everybody following? Yeah, okay.
Noah, quick question. Go back. So on the on alternative A, I mean, it's really simple. You take your 7236 times the total ERUs of 9170, you're coming up with your $66 million number, which is reflected on that previous slide.
Yep.
And alternative B, go back for a second. We take this 15417. What is your, what are you multiplying that by? Because if you multiply it just by growth, at 3498, you're coming up with 54 million. So we're 12 million short. So let's see, what's the the split between current and growth?
Right. So you're not really you're you're trying to approach it a different way, Sean? And and that's not how the math actually funnels into the 15,000. So I'm gonna see if I can put this up differently for you. And see if I can share my screen.
And I was just trying to, yeah, I appreciate that. Just trying to get back to the the total sum need of the current value plus the future value capital of 66 million.
Right. And Janine, oh, hey, good. Thank you. Okay, so hopefully you're seeing an Excel looking screen.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so this is a little little crass, but I'm gonna walk you through here. All right, so here I will highlight the methodology for A. And in this column here and and so again, A, we take some of this over here. So it's a little clearer. A, we're focused on the total cost divided by the 9170, right?
Yep.
Okay, easy. On B, we're actually focused on the 57672 divided by the 32. And then the 3498 divided by, actually, let's use a different color. Try again, Noah. There you go, 3489 by the 33.
Okay.
Okay, so dividing the 32 by the 576 gets you 5,780 or 717. And then taking the 33 divided by 3498 gives you $9,700. Adding those two values up, you come to the 15,000, 15,417. So you can see right away that under A, we're not doing it proportionally like that. We're taking the total. And then the second you do that, you actually put more emphasis on the growth paid for those growth projects.
Yep, totally track you. And then what's the mechanism of to collect the 5717?
So the the water connection fees are paid at the time of building permit. So before they connect and they would pay at that time.
So in essence, when somebody is paying the 15, whatever you scroll down, the 15 or 17, they're paying a portion towards the existing system and paying a portion towards the new projects, a larger portion of the new projects. So, yeah.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, so in another ways, if
I got it.
Yeah.
But I'm I don't get it because who actually is going to pay that $15,000?
The growth, the growth back.
Connections.
Growth paying.
The new connections.
The new connections.
It's just how they're allocating the value of the old system versus the new system.
Right.
Yep.
Beck, maybe you want to help. Maybe it would help to understand that in order for us to put the new facilities in for new growth, the existing system had to be there. And so
No, that has, that's that's not my concern. My concern was Sean's original question. Take that $15,000 number and what number do you multiply it by to get the 66 million?
And that's and that's why I wanted to show this back because you can't get there that way because the math is a proportion. And that's where we get these two values here that really make up the 15,000.
But the the 66 million includes
Correct.
That are going to be covered by the rates, if you will.
Yes.
Right. See Fred's got his hand raised.
Okay.
Yeah, I was waiting for Beck and Sean to ask my question and they sort of half asked it, but asks it. Excuse me. Sorry about that. But what what and what I was wondering is in each of these methods, A, B, and C, what is the portion that the current rate payer would be paying the 5672? And how would they be paying it? Would that be?
Fred, they won't pay. They don't pay any of it.
Yeah, so so Beck, let me answer your question, I believe, a little bit different way because I know what you're trying to solve for and it's not possible in this scenario. What what this is doing, I think, is key under K18 is this is an allocated growth method. Right? So you take the existing ERUs, which there's 5672 and the existing capital facility charges, that simple math does balance to 5717. Right? So that's based on today's ERUs and what we've already spent. That's an allocation. Now, moving forward, we know we have these new costs of $33 million on that previous slide. There's going to be 3,498 new connections. So that's simple math and that equals the new project 33928 right there. And so now for every new ERU, you're going to have 15,417 dollars that that new connection is going to pay. And so of the, Noah, correct me if I'm wrong, if we have 3,498 units come on, that's the one math you haven't done, times your 15417. We're gonna, we're gonna collect an additional $54 million.
Yep.
Right?
Yep. You're on it, Sean.
So so it just helps us create additional reserves for future projects. So it's just a, it's an allocated growth model. It's a different financial model. And so while our costs will be 34 million, we'll be capturing 54 million in this scenario is the way I'm reading the math.
Yeah, yeah, that's absolutely correct. And then to to follow up with that, under alternative A, again, because you're only going to actually get the 3,500 connections, right?
Yep.
The other 500. The other 5,000, 5,672 are past ERUs. We've already collected that. That's the system buy-in. So the only new ones you're going to collect are the 3,500.
Right. No existing user is going to pay for any future capital improvement.
Okay, that was the piece that was.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's not completely accurate. Any new capital project related to growth, there are capital projects.
Correct.
Where our portions of capital projects that are replacing existing infrastructure. And his early slide that showed those 75, 25, and 50% allocations. There are things that rates are paying for, but not the growth related projects.
But no one's getting a connection assessment. It's like, oh, here's a bill for $3,500 to help pay for capital projects. That's
Correct.
Correct. Just the new connections that have that one time fee.
Yes. So you did an excellent job of walking through the skin, Sean, and then that's why I was hoping here because it sounds like it's connecting. And this where again, I say, you can really see the difference of the growth, the 3,500 paying more of its weighted share, right? And will the new projects be 34 million? We don't know. That's just our cost estimate factor now. So you can see the higher collection. And what we talked about last week was the methodology because the council wants to ensure that there was an equitable way to apply these capital facilities charges. And again, going back to the slides, we started with a $49 million, or I'm gonna call it $50 million for simplicity, $50 million capital plan, water capital system cap plan. And of that cop, $50 million, 34 million is for growth. And the other $16 million is for current rate customers, the operating fund. So you got your really, your capital fund and your operating fund. And that's where you really did to see this equitable distribution for growth and current existing customers is in that calculation and in that separation of the new facilities.
Yeah. And what I would need help with, and maybe this question was better after we go to option C. So maybe I'll let you go to the next one before I ask a following question. I think we'll help tie this together.
Perfect. So we got to option B. And again, these are the methodologies we talked high level last week. And so as staff, we started challenging the number. We said, this is a big number compared to what it is today. Is there other consideration? And so we asked the DCD department to do a forecast and come up with, I guess, a new denominator for number C. So under C, you'll, you'll observe that we have a higher total ERUs. And where that's coming from is DCD's forecast of potential, potential ERU connections. So the other variable was based on the water system plan. This one is the DCD department doing a forecast, looking at all potential ERUs that could come into play, but maybe not be in that 10-year horizon as a, as a different approach to equitably distribute. Now we apply the same math as before under B. Now I'll bring this down just so hopefully it's a little easier to follow. And we'll change the colors up just a little bit. Okay. So you can see that now we're dividing the 33 million, 34 million dollars by 4,808 ERUs, which is an increase of, let's see here. Roughly 1,310 additional ERUs under scenario C. So that's the only real changes that there's additional ERUs sharing in this new project costs, which ultimately drives down our fee estimate to that 12,774.
But basically a little more of an optimistic view on what the growth will be.
Correct. Yep. The, the real, the real building growth, the real housing development growth, a little more optimistic view.
So I think a question.
Go ahead, Sean.
I was gonna say a question to help tie this all together. And I think this is where I know I would need some guidance is, you know, under B and C, which makes a ton of sense, right? We're allocating for what's already been built and started been paid for in addition to what, what needs to happen moving forward. But moving forward, those costs today are estimated at $33 million, but we're collecting $66 million. The variance of that 30, other $33 million, what is that being used for? Is that being used to upgrade or to, to bring current existing facilities? So it almost seems like we're right, you know, 10 years ago, someone bought a house, they paid their share and they're done. And so how where's the other, how is the other $33 million being used?
Yeah. I mean, we, we think of it as the buying into the system, right? The prior people all came and paid for the system and, and this is the original cost. I don't have that on here. So that's the new people's buy into the old system at a, at a proportion share. And yes, because it's a part of the water system charge, it's been used for water capital facilities, whether it's the new growth facilities or paying off debt on older facilities. Now that, now I've kind of made that one out because we don't have any debt on that yet. But you could see how you could use that for that or other water capital projects.
Yeah, no question. I just want to know how much is enough and then how much could be too much, right? If, if we were, if we did option B or C and we're left with $33 million in the bank, we've paid for, you know, these new projects, right? How much reserves do we, should we be looking to capture for, for the future of our city, right?
I think another piece of this too is these are estimates and construction costs are rising rapidly. So, and I know we look, we're going to look at this, we look at these things every six or so years. And we've been looking at it sooner than that because the landscape's been changing so rapidly. So there's, there's a lot of variables to this. You're, you're asking a great question though. How much, how much is too much?
Yeah, we need, we need ample reserves, but yeah, how much is too much? So any guidance as we continue down this path would be appreciated.
Because these, if we, if these rates or connection charges are too high, that's where we run the risk of
Preventing development.
I mean, development and then we're not getting our transportation impact fees, our sewer connection charges, our sales tax revenue and on and on. So I see Beck's hand raised.
Yep. My question is, you know, kind of parallels what Sean's talking about. And that is, this is a 10-year projection, an estimate of what these are going to cost us. And that $3,500 number of ER, ERUs is also a projection of how many units we're really going to build in the next 10 years. But we're going to look at this plan again in five to six years. And at that point, that whatever that 54 number was or whatever, some of the 35 will move up in that category. And we will have a new projection of ERUs. So what I'm saying is in the future, we're going to be collecting more money for that 33. I'm not saying it right.
I'm following you, but yeah.
Following you. I hear you saying, we have another time to, to measure and cut again in five to six years. And if we needed to reallocate for the future growth at that point, they could move.
Correct. And the future growth then is going to pay for some of these capital facilities that we're doing now. Just as the 3,500 is paying for the capital facilities that are in place now.
Right.
So what I'm trying to just get clear on is what you had alluded to, Sean, and we don't want this to be too expensive. We want to cover our costs. We want to be mindful of not charging our citizens too much, but charging them an appropriate amount for the growth.
Right. And if we needed to go in, I guess another question is like, so let's say we have a, some sort of capital infrastructure that's 20 years old and it goes, we need to replace it in five years. Can we use these dollars to also replace that equipment?
They're, they're all in one fund.
Yeah.
We're going to prioritize where, where, where the dollars go to. But replacement should be coming from rates as we identify these needs.
Okay. So that's my question then. So why would we need, if replacement should come from rate, why would we need a surplus of $30 million in this scenario for, for new, when new already paid for new? That's what I'm not tracking.
Well, and I guess I'll be the pessimist in the forecast scenarios and I'll let Nick be the optimist. Because I would say 3,500 ERUs is a lot of ERUs per year over the next 10 years consistently. So I, I, I hear what you're saying. You see that forecasted value saying that's a lot of money to come in. I'm looking at our actual project list up here and saying, we have funding shortfalls for the next five years. I don't see a surplus. I don't see a, that we're going to have a huge reserve. I see that we're going to be doing borrowings for these large capital projects and that we're not going to have the cash flow from the CFCs to cash flow the project. So I guess it's based on your perspective. Now again, if tomorrow we got 3,500 new connections at this new rate, I was completely wrong. We have a lot of money. We can go build this entire capital project plan, assuming the construction environment actually matches our cost estimate. And what we've learned, at least with well 13, where it started out as a $6 million project, and now it's an 11.2 million dollar project in less than what, three or four years? You know? Just keep that.
No, I, and I hear you. No, it's great. It's great commentary. I guess, I guess the, the, the mathematical equation in front of us basically hedges our bet by 100%, right? We're collecting twice as much as what the new costs are going to be. And to your point, if things slow down, and so that's the, the magic crystal ball that we need to do is to get comfortable with what realistically could come in. And because a lot of this stuff needs to be built on the front end. So we've got the expense, but who knows how long it's going to take to, to bring it in. But we're not trying to, we're not going to have 66 million worth of expense. We're going to have 33. And so there's, I, I think there's a, there's a hybrid in here.
So when Well, I think the important just pieces, what I've heard here is that we're, we're basing this on some estimates. And by revisiting these numbers, if it's in five years, we may be off on one or the other. We may have underestimated the amount of growth and therefore we have an opportunity to roll it back. Or if we've overestimated the growth, then we've got to sit down and look at it from the different direction. So the important piece to it is this is the best guess that we're, what, what we have today and the point of revisiting it maybe even more frequent in five years if we see a major change.
Yep.
So an option, I know Katie shared something that Noah, Noah's not in favor of this because it complicates things. But I do kind of like the idea is that we've we, and we should be, we, we remember we've had, when we did the sewer, we talked about the CPI index and the allowable interest. And these current numbers have those in those in this, correct, Noah? 100% of the allowable interest and the CPI. And if we only took a 50, you know, 50% of the allowable interest in, in the first year or so, you know, to a period and stepped to the higher number. The complication to that and why Noah would advocate against that is we are going to enter into like, we're likely, we're negotiating and we're likely to enter into an agreement with McCormick communities for additional water system improvements and they're going to get a credit. And if we've got a moving number, then we have to account for that in agreement and it complicates things. In particular for the finance department, but it could be, you know, while we don't have those numbers there, it softens it, I think by about a third and in the beginning. So just a thought.
My other just comment is, as we think about this, is did I not hear that we just approved for the sewer connection charges? The formula under alternative A. And so we would be using a different formula for our different proprietary funds.
Yes, that is correct, Beck. And, and again, the reason that came about was because when we look at scenario A, that CFC, and again, I always go down to the alternative A, the net to the city in the McCormick area because that's where a larger, large amount of billions coming from. It really reduces the net to the city. And so the $6,000 is, is almost pretty close to what we're collecting today. You didn't really move the needle much, in particular because we have new agreements that are requiring the city to make payments.
Okay, Mayor, I need to let you know that I just got notification that I'm getting bumped off shortly. So I appreciate being able to attend as long as I have, but I'm going to have to leave the meeting.
Thank you for joining us, Beck. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
So I think if I could add anything to this conversation more, maybe this is more philosophical. But what we're trying to achieve is a, a CFC that doesn't stifle growth, but provides revenue. We know that we're going to have to be either augmenting with loans or grants. And when the loans, we have to be able to play the, pay the debt service. And we know that we also have to provide a vehicle by which agreements can be put in place that are equitable, that developers, through some sort of a credit process, you know, there is a benefit to them entering into that sort of agreement and building this infrastructure for us. So really it's kind of like the three-legged stool. We have our CFCs, we have our credits and we have our different funding options. And we're trying to find the best scenario that balances that and reduces risk on if growth doesn't happen, if, if interest rates rise, if construction costs rise. There are a lot of variables, but we're really trying to balance, you know, the tools that we have to get where we need to be, if that makes any sense.
And Jay, I saw you raise your hand and then I'll go to Sean.
I did. And thank you, Mayor. I think I'm going to add another leg to that because I've heard it from several council members. And that is basically, we're not putting any on our current rate holders that they don't get stuck with any of the bill. Because in essence, as we expand the system, we're also stressing our existing system. And I think that's, you know, why we have to make sure that we're, we're putting in all the safeguards and construction. And I really, I concur with Noah and the mayor that construction costs are really of concern right now. And I think that everything to be conservative on that is the right move. So this is very good work. Thank you, Noah.
Sean?
So Noah, Mark, you know, one of the things I don't like about alternative C is it's taking this, this potential growth, right? You're going from 3,500 to 4,800. That's a massive, that's a 30% increase. I think that's, that's too risky, but I wonder if we could do another exercise kind of utilizing, you know, what if over the next seven years, we, we had to bond all of these things, right? That we don't have the cash flows, Noah said. So we went out and got 20-year bonds, right? And you were able to take this planned ERU growth of 3,498 and extend it from 10 years to 20 years, which is obviously way more conservative. What would it take in annual collections of this, right? To be able to support the 20-year bond service, debt service? Right? Understanding what our true risk is from cash flow.
Well, and I guess a, a big question mark, the mayor's touched on it a little bit. And so it did, Mark, is if the city decides to, and we've been discussing this, change our code language for water credits and change our methodology there, that's going to be money right off the top. So if we start to enter any of these water credit agreements, the net to the city all of a sudden isn't that 11,000, it's something much less. And we know we are having significant conversations with different groups about that project list. And the other thing I wanted to mention, Sean, since you brought this up, again, we have a $50 million capital plan, not a 33, $33 million capital plan, right? And anything that we can't fund with the CFCs, those will be funded with, from the rate pairs.
Yep.
So while yes, this fee does not directly go to the rate payer. If the money doesn't come in, we still need to make these capital improvements. We move to our operating fund to make those payments.
Right.
So I, I, regards to where the denominator came from, I don't know if Mark can speak to where in the water system. in the water system plan, how this gets factored. And I'm sure it's a very engineering, technical value that is, helps to build out the whole water system plan. And then I'm not totally sure where the forty-eight comes from as far as Nick's potential. I think he, he was doing some forecasting out.
I can go through that real quick if you'd like to hear. So when we were looking at the denominator, obviously, the first challenge in looking at this is separating the growth that's outside of the city service area from that, which is inside the city service area. So the forty-eight-hundred did not include any growth in the Bremerton service area, which would be McCormick North. Sorry, my dogs are just decided to start playing here. The, so it doesn't include anything in McCormick North, or obviously anything served by West Sound Utility District. About half of that growth is in McCormick West and McCormick Woods, which I believe is probably going to take a little more than ten years to build out, probably closer to fifteen. So this is a ten-year forecast, but it's really hard to say how much of McCormick and Woods, Woods and West will actually develop in that time. Though I don't believe it is unreasonable that all of it could develop in that time at the rate that they are currently going out there. The other growth projections there, we did include McCormick East, which is the the piece along Glenwood Road at McCormick Woods Drive on the backside of McCormick Woods. But other than that, other than that project, all of the other projects are in for some phase of permitting right now. So I think the the forty-eight-hundred is certainly aggressive, but at least some of the projects that it's based on, it's not a matter of if, but when. Because it's McCormick Woods and there are development agreements and the, the Development Agreement for Transportation that we just passed has a term. I think it was Charlie twenty-year, or ten years plus a ten-year extension. I can't remember where we settled on that. So presumably within twenty years, that will, that revenue would certainly come in.
So it's kind of the hybrid that you were looking for, Sean. We were, we are stepping a little farther out in our crystal ball. You know, and it's, what are we? Five thousand and change right now, fifty-three-hundred is the current fee? Is that?
Five thousand nine forty-five.
So almost six-thousand dollars. So you know, we're doubling in alternative C and we're nearly tripling. You know? And B.
Yeah, and doubling shouldn't be offensive, because look at when those old facilities were built and what the costs were to build those facilities with the cost today. I mean, it certainly makes sense. I just want to make sure that we that we look at these mathematical equations many different ways to make sure. I think our intentions is equity, right? We're looking at what's already been built, the other, the ratepayers, and what needs to be replaced, because that's gonna be paid for with rate. And so the more we can collect from development, it will impact rates. And so just to make sure that we're looking at this from all sides, to make the best decision on that share of equity is, is helpful to me.
And we are looking at rates, remember this summer, so.
Yep. So, yeah, we need to look at this before, I mean, I think the rate equation's a little bit easier, because we know what that other number is versus new growth. You know, the percentages on that last spreadsheet.
I have a question that I appreciate.
Sean, if I can, Cindy's had her hand raised. And then I'll call on you. Cindy?
Well, not that this makes a complete difference, but I'm just wondering if we have a list of some of the comparables for the surrounding communities, just to see where we would fall.
Will be the highest.
We will be.
Yes. I don't, I don't, while I appreciate that, Cindy, I mean, it is what it is. This is what we're facing in the next ten years. These are going to be our costs. And so and I think we've heard this before, it's just we can't unfortunately compare it to surrounding jurisdictions, because you know, they were able to build some of these projects ten years ago where the environment was what, this was different, right? And so it's nice to know, but the reality is, is this is where we are. And to make sure that development pays for development, development, these are the costs that are applicable.
Right. Each jurisdiction has their own CIP list, their own ERU calculations, and you can't compare because they're not comparable.
Sure.
Okay. John? John, are you good?
You're muted, John.
His video went away too. There you go.
I, I got my question answered. Thank you.
Okay. So what do we come, what's the I'm hearing, whether it's B or C, I'm not hearing anybody advocating for A. Unless I'm wrong.
Frankly, I would, I would love to have Noah, Mayor, Mark, just take another crack at this and look at the, some of the other conversations we brought up today and bring back a recommendation and explain why.
I guess that's, Sean, what is it you're asking us to look at? Because from this table, we've, we've taken a look at the projects, right? We say, here's the list. And how much of this is attributable to growth? And we've defined that. And we've, we've kind of went back and forth over that in the last few months to arrive at, really, thirty-three million dollars is for growth. And if gross can pay for growth, what we're forecasting as far as the growth connections coming in that need this thirty-four million dollars is that thirty-five to five-thousand-dollar ERU number. That, those are the two numbers. So from the numbers side, you'd have to give me something else to point to, to come up with a number, because I don't want arbitrarily to come up with a number. I want to stick to something that's consistent and is defensible and that makes sense. So if you provide me different guidance to look at, that would be useful.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but right here in this chart, great chart, the growth portion of this is thirty-three-nine-twenty-eight. Right?
Yes.
But in scenario B and C, growth is actually paying sixty-six million.
Because of the formula where you, we've, we're changing.
So I feel like there's something, just my gut instinct says there's, there's something a little bit more in the middle that is achieving our goal of an equitable approach. Because I just, my gut says if we collect sixty-six and growth's share of growth is thirty-four, that might be a little egregious.
Well, well, growth is paying for growth, but they're also paying to buy into the system, because the system's already here in place. So they have to pay a portion of that. And the values we have are, you know, the original cost and the current ERU value.
And I get it, but it's already paid for, right? And so.
So are you advocating then that we alter that variable to reduce that buy-in? That would be, that would be about the only variable that we could change. The other variable we could change could be this stepped approach that with allowable interest, not collecting a hundred percent, but a different, different amount in a, for a period of time and stepping to the, to the larger amount. I think those are two variables we could change. If that's your direction, and we're not advocating for that, but I think, I think Nick's more aggressive growth totals are realistic, maybe not in ten years. But if we're gonna borrow twenty years, they're definitely realistic in a fifteen-to-twenty-year model. John?
No, could you put up the alternatives again? Personally, for me, I'm comfortable with the formulas that you're using. It really is a difference between the estimated growth between B and C. As long as we review it, I don't know how frequently we need to review it, but kind of do a reality check on the growth compared to what our projections are. I guess I'm a little more conservative. I would probably advocate for B with the, the hope that if growth comes in at the rate that that Nick is projecting, that we could revisit and roll it back some. But I would want to make sure that we have the funds adequate to do the the improvements that.
Here's one of my, one of my concerns with that meth, and I hope I'm wrong. If we set this too high and we stymie, and we go out and borrow, which we're likely going to need to do this, and we borrow the money and we set these too high and we stymie development, and then we don't get the connection charges, then that's a scenario where our rate, we'll have to make those debt service payments. And it'll get late on our ratepayers.
Won't you have that same if we project too much growth, that we're not going to get enough money coming in to pay the debt service?
Yeah, John, I agree with you on, I want to take a conservative approach to this. And then the first thing I want to take a conservative approach to is the planned ERU growth, right? That's where we could really miss this and really impact the city from a cash flow perspective. I guess where I keep going back to is let's, let's stay with alternative B for a second. And let's just assume for a second it's conservative. And we're gonna hit the thirty-four ninety-eight, and we collect fifteen-four. We're gonna collect sixty-six million dollars. And the cost of the gross side of this is only thirty-three. The other piece has already been paid. So what are we gonna do with the other thirty-three million dollars?
Well, I think that's where we revisit. And I think your discussion that you raised earlier about how much is enough in a reserve. And that's why, you know, I would be comfortable with revisiting this thing probably more frequently than five years.
Because then ten years from now, let's say we're gonna have more growth. Well, that additional growth is gonna pay for that additional growth. So we're gonna be back here and and now the bucket A is gonna be a lot bigger, because it's gonna be at sixty-six, not thirty-three, because of.
Right. But if we revisit it more frequently, we can make adjustments downward. So that we can, whatever we hit is that magical number for a reserve, then we need to revisit.
And that would, I guess would be interesting.
Being honest, though, five or six years is as soon as we're gonna, there are so many priorities. And this is such a large undertaking. You know, and we've been talking about this for a year to get to this point. And so.
Well, that's what I would love to see a cash flow analysis. Let's just say that we wanted, we were gonna do all of these projects, and we're just gonna go and borrow the money. And we're gonna get this all done, thirty-three million dollars. Right? What would be our debt service over the next ten, fifteen years? And look at it that way. And what would, what would the you know, if we were to stretch this thirty-four ninety-eight over fifteen years, what would that be able to cash flow?
And I'm just kidding, because on the thirty-four ninety-eight is just a portion. Again, the total is sixty million. Because the project, all right, let's take a look at example.
I get it, but that's gonna be the rate discussion. That other revenue's coming from rates is what I just heard.
That's true.
Yeah.
And so that rate's gonna take care of that piece. So I think we truly are dealing with a thirty-four-million-dollar number. The other, in equity, the other sixteen million, we're gonna have to address with rates. And obviously, if we can have more people come on the system over the next five years, in theory, rates would be lower. If we have new connections, if we had more ERUs actually active.
The, 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 yeah. The additional money is the, is the buy-in to the system. And if that's the number that you, I'm, that's what I'm hearing, I think from a couple of you, is should we be looking at that factor and adjusting that number for the buy-in? Is what you're, is that what I'm hearing? Or am I hearing you correctly?
No, I think you're right, because what is equitable for, as we move forward, what should existing ERUs pay via their rates to pay for this additional infrastructure, their piece of the system they're gonna be using that needs to be paid for by rate versus what is the actual equitable portion of what development is paying for, not only with additional development, but some allocation from what's already in place, because they are using that existing infrastructure too. Right? And right now, I feel like it's a little bit too lopsided towards the growth side. Not the growth side, just because we're gonna have a surplus. Right? I just, I guess I don't understand where this other thirty-three million dollars is going. If, if we, if we actually hit these numbers over ten years and we collect sixty-six million and ten, and the cost is thirty-three to build this additional infrastructure, I guess the question is, where's this other thirty-three million going? That question hasn't been answered.
It, it'll, there'll be more projects. I can assure you. And but, and it's, you're, you're not looking at it as it's intended in this model. It's the buy-in to the system. So they're, they're generating there, there, it's money coming into the system for their buy-in to the system. And you're, you may have a good point, that it's already been paid for. And it's just, there's multiple ways to look at this. And I.
There absolutely is.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. This is actually a really great discussion about equity and how to do this, because it's tricky. And I will say, Sean, I think that thirty-three million that you keep referring to could be used to replace the systems that are already in place. There's gonna be failing infrastructure that we currently have in place, and that's gonna have even higher costs probably to replace it by the time we get there. This is only looking at the growth side, right?
So when I asked that question thirty minutes ago, they said that no, that would have to be rates paying for the replacement, as I believe was Mark said, that we could not tap these dollars for the replacement pieces.
They're all going into one capital facilities fund.
Yeah.
I'm just saying what Mark said on the, he may have misphrased. I would let him speak again, but that's, that's not what he said. Which will again lead me to believe we have a thirty-three-million-dollar surplus and funds that, where do we deploy them?
Yeah. Capital projects.
Yeah, 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 gotcha. So that makes more sense now, where you're pushing on that, because yes, if we had a current facility that's ours that completely failed, capital facilities chargers would be a revenue source to use to fix that. And we probably have to prioritize that and say, hey, we're not gonna do this other project, project thirteen, because that's, you know, five years out. But we got to take care of this project today. What do we have? We got operating fund, we got capital fund, because it's part of the equation.
And that makes sense. Now you've answered the question, what can this other thirty-three million dollars be used for? Because we have to plan for that. These will fail.
Jane?
No, I guess just, you know, hit the money on the market that these additional rates are gonna stress the existing system. We're gonna have to replace existing, and we're trying to protect our current rateholders. Ratepayers also. So we, I think we've covered the rap, gone down the rabbit hole.
Right. I've seen your hand up and down a half a dozen times. So we gotta have a.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm comfortable with the discussion, but the, the thing that I am less certain about is what we say is the current cost estimate of forty-nine million. That is the cost estimate today. And I am comfortable with what, what could be perceived as a surplus, because I don't think it's gonna, I don't, I think the actual figure would be higher than that once it comes due.
So I've heard John advocating for B. Sean's looking for a hybrid. I saw it. I saw Cindy nodding her head on B.
I'm not looking for a hybrid, Rob. I just, you know, with, again, it's just, I'll call it surplus, right? Because if our estimate for new, new growth is X, and then I think we should have an estimate for replacement. So I'm not, I'm not looking for a hybrid. I just want to make sure that with this sixty-six million we're allocating, that it's defensible to say, because this is what we're planning for over the next ten years. This is why we need the sixty-six versus the.
So would you, would you like a lower denominator for the buy-in? That's what's affecting that number.
I would love Mark's and expert testimony on the likely cost of continuing to build out and to replace our existing system over the next ten, ten years. And then we need to plan accordingly for that, for that amount of revenue. Not any less, but not significantly more.
Yeah, these are our best estimates, for the projects that we have in ten years. The six, what is it, sixty million dollars? And we're likely going to adjust this list again in five years. Some things will get built and come off of it, and we're likely gonna identify more things that are, that are gonna become emergent. Mark, do you have anything to add?
No, I mean, this is, you know, the good news is, this isn't a wish list like it used to be for decades, where it was just a list and we didn't have rates to cover. So this is a realistic look at this point in time, but two years from now, things could change substantially, because we could have some sort of infrastructure failure. We could have a well that suddenly isn't producing, or, so this is our best guess at this moment in time. And as Jackie said at the beginning, she's gone extremely conservative on adding everything that she could possibly think of, not that we're trying to increase the number, but that we're trying to make sure that we can get funding for a project if we need it. So I would say it's a conservative list based on that, that there are a lot of things. There are a lot of projects on here that are more urgent than others, obviously. But this is a comprehensive list today. And our water system plan will be good for ten years. So
it's, I guess, an argument to Nick's alternative C is, it's probably a fifteen-year growth allocation. growth allocation unless things get really crazy. But also this list, though, just a second, Sean, also this list, remember, just like our transfer, every time we look at this. There's stuff here that's probably going to be here fifteen years from now because we're going to identify something that's more emergent than item forty two. And now it's item forty two is going to stay on that next ten. It might be there twenty years from now. Because growth patterns change in, in the city that, that we hadn't imagined. But.
Yeah, priorities change. If Doug Scrub it hadn't sold McCormick to McCormick communities. We wouldn't be having, you know, all it takes is one simple action. It's like the butterfly flapping its wing. You know, we, we can only plan as best we can plan.
Absolutely. I just feel like we're missing the, for this conversation, we're, we're missing the piece that we're expecting existing rate pairs to pay as far as their fair share of these facilities. Because what I'm hearing is, is all this new growth, the infrastructure is totaling thirty three million dollars. This is our best guess today, what it's going to cost.
I've, I've asked it two times and I'm asking it a third time. Do you want, the only denominator we can change to affect this is the buy into the existing infrastructure is the direction from council for us to modify that and we'll do it. But we're, that, that's, we can modify that. Okay? But if you don't want us to, then that will reduce that number.
I think you're missing the point. So, so on the, on that, on that back slide, i- i- if, if the total costs are forty nine and sixteen of that is being allocated to existing rate pairs, then we're going to collect sixteen from existing ERUs. And then in one of these scenarios where B and C were collecting sixty six million dollars from the new ERUs, you take this, the sixteen plus the sixty six. And now you're at eighty three million dollars for where's that going? See what I'm saying? It's, it's not so much that I have a problem with the formulas. I just don't understand where all this additional revenue is going.
When we go to bid on this five years from now, it's, this is on today's dollars. It's, it's going to costs are rising faster than our CPI. And so it's going to, and, or there, there's.
Going from thirty three to eighty? I mean, shouldn't we be able to take a look right now and at least plan for some sort of increase?
We, and we have, and the, the denominator, as I've, I've, I've said a number of times here is that affects that is the buy in to the existing system. Do you want that modified? That's what will reduce that.
I, I know, but I, I, back to Jay's point where he wants to protect the existing rate pairs. What's not part of this conversation right now is in another couple of months, we're going to sit down and we're going to have to try to come up with another sixteen million dollars from existing rate pairs. And, and I think we should be having these, these conversations concurrently because I, I think there's going to be decisions made that aren't informed by the total. And we're going to get three months down the road and go, someone's going to go, oh, now, I, boy, I wish I, I knew then what I know now.
Yeah, it won't be three months from now, Sean. It's going to be next, the end of the year, if not into next year.
Okay, a year from now, whatever.
So, and that's why we're trying to, we've got all of this growth happening. We need to get going on these capital projects. And this discussion can't wait to, to talk about the rate equation. It, it's likely fourth quarter, we're going to start that and I, having participated in those kind of discussions. They, they take a while and will probably be into the first quarter before it's implemented.
Yeah, and, and I apologize that I've taken this down a rabbit hole. I just, I feel like I'm missing something and I would be happy to come down and and, and take this offline and, and ask some of these additional questions, do some initial cash flow analysis just to get comfortable, but I just feel like the variances are too big from what we're collecting to what I'm seeing with projected expenses. That's all.
You want to sit down with Noah and I?
I'd love to.
Next week?
Do it offline.
Yeah, okay. So Sean's wanting some more information. I, I just think.
There's too big a numbers and I just feel like it's.
It's a math formula. We just, where, where, where do we, do we want to alter one of the variables?
Well, I would like to just remind folks that I appreciate Sean, your concern and you need to get answers, but it's a council's decision, not an individual's decision. So.
You're right. You're absolutely right.
Jay and Fred, do you have a preferred alternative? B?
B.
I'm comfortable with B and I'm still looking at the math. I mean fifteen times four, one, seven times thirty four ninety eight. I come up with fifty three million. Not sixty six, but besides that, I am comfortable with alternative B.
Scott, do you have a thought?
I'm, I'm comfortable with B. I mean, I'm, I'm a little wary of, of I guess the idea or the effect that this higher cost could drive some of the alternatives or some of the development down. But I'm comfortable with B. It's, it is, you know, not quite three thousand dollars off of alternative C.
All right. And we'll get Sean's questions answered and maybe we'll bring another alternative forward if something develops from that. But it sounds, it sounds like there's support for alternative B. Okay. So we are to moving on here. That was great. You know, we've become so transactional in the last, you know, six months or so and, and while it may appear to none of that, I, I ended this discussion was great debate and dialogue and none of it was in any way disrespectful. So I, I greatly appreciate that. These are the tough policy decisions that you guys really need to make and, and then doing a respectful manager and I, I really appreciate your, your professionalism in, in these discussions. You know, so many times now here lately, we've just been approving contracts and moving things forward and, and these, these are the tough things here. These policy decisions, so.
And if council doesn't need anything else from me, I'll sign off for the night. Thank you for the opportunity.
You're going to miss out on some good stuff here, so.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, well, moving on, we are to our public hearing, you know, which is the surplus of proprietary funds, utility equipment. And Janine is going to handle this, I believe, is according to this because it says Clerk Reinderson.
All right. Good evening, Council and Mayor. Pursuant to RCW thirty five point nine four point zero four zero. Whenever the city council determines that equipment originally acquired for public utility purposes is surplus to the city's needs and is not required for providing continued public utility service. The city council may, by a resolution and after public hearing, cause such equipment to be leased, sold or otherwise conveyed. City staff has determined that the equipment described on the attached exhibit B no longer serves a purpose for the city and is no longer required for providing continued public utility service. Therefore, city staff requests that the city council declare the listed items of utility equipment to be surplus to the needs of the city. And a resolution is under the business items for action. And so the exhibit B lists the South Sydney Reservoir at two zero five one Sydney Avenue of a hundred thousand gallons. So staff recommends opening the public hearing.
And I will open the public hearing related to the disposal of the utility equipment. Is there anyone in the pub, member of the public online, Janine, looking to testify?
No, just Mr. Tony Lang.
Mr. Tony Lang is the one that will dispose of this equipment. He's not going to testify. So with that, I will close the public hearing since there is no one present to testify. And we will move on to our business items. The first of which is the adoption of a resolution granting final plat approval for the Amherst Final Plat McCormick Parcel A. Mr. Bond.
Yes, thank you. Before you tonight is the final plat of the McCormick Parcel A known as the Amherst Final Plat. This plat was approved in, the preliminary plat was approved in twenty twenty and SEPA was performed at that time. The developer has just about completed the improvements for this plat, but has chosen to provide a performance bond to guarantee performance of all remaining work so that these lots can be recorded. And the, the, the buyer of these lots is already applying for building permits in anticipation of getting going on home construction here. Real soon and the recommendation from staff is to approve a resolution granting the approval of the final plat of Amherst.
Councilor Deaner. You're, you're muted, sir. You're still muted.
There you are. I hit my space bar and moved the agenda document. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution as presented, granting final plat approval for plat of Amherst.
Second.
Motion and a second by Councilor Deaner, a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Is there any debate or comment on, on this matter? Councilmember Rose Pepe, go ahead.
This one is a little bit near and dear to my heart. I would like to say that the developer has certainly met all the requirements of the city's code. But I would like to thank the mayor and Councilman Kuchy already for working with the developer based on some comments that were received by residents in McCormick Woods when this first came about to basically take down a large greenbelt area. So it's kind of tough because it wasn't, you know, in the plan when McCormick started that way. And I talked to Nick several months ago about, you know, what, what avenues do we have as a city to protect green belts from? You know, when developers change their plans or they sell from one developer to another and it's just something that we need to think about, I think, down the road. But again, I'd like to thank the mayor and fellow council members for working with residents and developers for saving what they could on this. And I'll be voting yes on this because it meets the city code. Thank you.
Councilmember Chang?
I was, what, I had a question for Nick. I noticed that there are seven tracks and they're, they're clearly marked as open space or storm detention. Two of them I'm curious about. It's tracks D and E that say they're for future development. Do you have any more details on that? I assume there's going to be a parcel next to this Amherst and they'll be part of that parcel. Do, have you?
I have to scroll to the map real quick to see which ones you're referring to. Did, did you have the letters associated with the tracks that are future development?
E and E.
Okay, so, so D, so E is behind lots eleven, twelve, or ten, eleven and twelve and connects over to the city's well site. This tract is available for future use, but I do not believe that it is intended for any kind of housing development. At this time and tract D, I believe the golf maintenance facility is right there and my recollection was that track D was going to be transferred to the, the golf course for their use. That could also be the case with track E, but I'm not one hundred percent sure.
Thank you. They seem to be next to a different tax parcel, the different number. So I just didn't know if that was a future development or not.
Yeah, if you pull up an aerial photo, you'll see that the maintenance facility is sandwiched right in between the city wells and McCormick, the Amherst plat. So I think that's, that's why those were shown as future development and not open space because they're they may be used for, for an expansion of the maintenance facility.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, you'll be voting on the adoption of a resolution granting final plat approval for the Amherst plat. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Is anyone opposed? Hearing none, the resolution passes unanimously. We're to item B now, adoption of a resolution declaring certain equipment as surplus and authorizing its disposal.
All right. Good evening, Council and Mayor. Assets of the city that are no longer usable are no longer valuable to the city or are surplus to city needs may be removed from city ownership, sold or in any other way disposed with a declaration of surplus by the city council. RCW thirty five point nine four zero point zero four zero requires a public hearing prior to disposable equipment owned by utility. Surplus water sewer utility and storm drainage utility equipment is described on the attachment B. A public hearing was previously held for the disposition of water, sewer utility and storm drainage utility personal property. Money from the sale of surplus property is deposited into the fund which own the equipment. When disposal is to the general public through direct sale, sealed bid or auction, final determination of value shall be the highest bid or offer. The city may transfer a surplus asset to another public agency upon written request and a determination that is in the public interest. Staff recommends adoption of a resolution declaring certain property surplus and allowing for its disposition.
Okay, Councilmember Lucarelli.
I move to adopt a resolution declaring certain equipment surplus and authorizing its disposition.
Motion by Councilmember Lucarelli and a second by Councilmember Deaner. Any questions of public work staff? It's the, it's the reservoir next to Paul Powers Park is not been in operation for probably ten years and, and we're going to have it removed eventually. Councilmember Lucarelli?
I just want to request that that money stay within the utility and not be used the for anything else.
I don't believe it could be used anywhere, any other way.
I thought it said that the surplus could be used if the assets, a surplus asset could be transferred. I'm just the second paragraph.
Noah, I, I don't, I don't believe it's enterprise funds.
Yeah, no, the mayor is correct. If it was the enterprise funds that purchased it, we're in surplus, it's going to go, the funds will go back into the enterprise funds. It sounds like you read something else. I'm trying to pull up the language that you were reading.
Yeah.
The second paragraph refers to an intergovernmental transfer of the asset. Meaning if you were to give it to another public agency and that's not what's happening here.
Okay.
Thank you for the question. Other questions or comments? All right, you'll be voting on a resolution declaring certain equipment as surplus and authorizing its dis- dis- disposal. I don't care for disposition. All, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? And then the motion carries unanimously. We're to item C, adoption of a resolution, resolution approving a contract with PSP Engineering and Environmental Inc. For safety training and manual development. Mr. Dorsey?
Your Honor, Councilmembers. City staff has determined that the need for a qualified consultant to provide consistent safety training of staff and ongoing review and updating of the current city safety manual is needed. Therefore, on February twelfth and nineteenth, twenty twenty one, the city's public works department published a request for proposals for safety training and safety manual development. By the February twenty six, twenty twenty one deadline, the city's public works department did receive two proposals from qualified firms. PBS Engineering and Environmental and Safety Training Compliance LLC. On March twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, public work staff scored each firm's statement of qualifications and cost proposals against the criteria established for this contract. On March twenty fifth, twenty twenty one, staff determined that PBS Engineering Environmental was the highest ranking firm based upon the results of the scoring spreadsheet. And on March twenty ninth, twenty twenty one, public work staff successfully completed the bidder's responsibility checklist for PBS Engineering and Environmental, Inc. The safety training and safety manual development work pursuant to this contract will occur beginning with the mutual execution of the contract through December thirty first of twenty twenty four. Staff recommends adoption of resolution zero three zero dash two one, thereby approving of and authorizing the mayor to execute contract number C zero four eight dash two one with PBS Engineering Environmental, Inc. For the safety training and the safety manual on track through December thirty first, twenty twenty four in an amount of one hundred thousand dollars and documenting the professional services procurement procedures. And I'd like to point to the fiscal impact that the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two manual budget allocated sixteen thousand for this activity. As this contract exceeds the amount and spans until twenty twenty four budget amendment is required.
Is there a motion? Councilor Chang?
I move to adopt resolution number zero thirty dash twenty one, authorizing the mayor to execute contract number C zero four eight dash twenty one with PBS Engineering and Environmental, Inc. For safety training and safety manual development in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars and documenting the professional services procurement procedures.
Second.
Motion of Councilor Chang, second, the Councilmember Rosa Pepe, and I'd just like to add. Motion of Councilor Chang, second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. And I'd just like to add, this is a significant amount of money, but we also pay a tremendous amount of money to L and I in our, in our rates. And it's imperative that we have a quality safety program to minimize our claims where we also participate in a risk pool that at times we get dangerously close to being kicked out of because of our claims. So that's a big piece of why the public works and Tony and Mark have been working on improving our safety programs, having safety meetings, and they just recognized the need to increase the, the the vendor and the manuals and get outside expertise to, to help us improve our safety program. That's, that's a big piece of what this is about. I capture that correctly, Mr. Dorsey?
Yeah, and I'd like to say that, you know, the city, again, I can only speak to the last 12 and a half years, but we've really come a long way in safety and trainings and in our actual safety plan that will be Tony, is will put a lot of effort in. And, you know, we've had some issues, our department and other departments, but this is definitely the direction that we're going, especially as we continue to grow.
Questions or, or comments?
I'm glad you shared that, Mayor, because $100,000 is a lot of money for the development of a safety manual and provides some training, so.
It's a, it is a significant investment. There's no doubt about it.
Well, again, it's, it's, it's updating the manual, but it's, isn't it, Tony? It's monthly trainings and documentation and so it's, again, it's the things that we're implementing for the, the morning huddles and the afternoon debriefs and and the other thing too is, you know, the city used to hire everything out. Quite honestly, we're doing a lot more work ourselves and that's inherently creating the potential for hazard by doing a lot of this work ourselves. And that's just unfortunate unintended consequence of doing a lot of this work ourselves. So we have to be fully trained. Everybody needs to be on board and fully certified so that we don't have issues.
Comments or questions? All right, hearing none, you'd be voting on the adoption of a resolution approving a contract with PSP Engineering and Environmental for safety training and safety manual development. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? The motion passes. Resolution passes, actually. So we are to item D, adoption of a resolution approving amendment number one to contract number zero three six dash two O with Kurzian and Associates for on-call professional materials testing inspection and geotechnical services. This is you, Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you. Consistent with budget forty-four twenty, staff identified the need for an on-call professional materials testing inspection and geotechnical services to support development projects and city improvements utilizing the qualification-based procurement procedures set out in chapter thirty-nine eighty RCW and RCW thirty-nine oh four one fifty-five. In early 2021, staff established a list of qualified consultants from the 2020 consultant roster for main category building structure improvement services, services and subcategory construction inspection, material inspection and testing, geotechnical engineering and geotechnical engineering. Staff reviewed, scored and ranked the qualifications of the consultants selected from the roster. The city's public works department recommended the award of the contract to the highest ranking firm, which was Kurzian. The cost for this work was set at a maximum 15,000 for 2020 in negotiation terms, negotiated terms of the contract with the Kurzian occurred consistent with delegated. I've got a whole punch right there. Delegated authority for lowest cost budget items on March 16th of 2020, the public works director executed contract C zero three six dash two zero with Kurzian and Associates for on-call professional testing and inspection and geotechnical service in the amount of $15,000. And that was a lot of background because this is an amendment. So in 2021, the city has identified services needed to support development projects and city improvement projects. Additional budget authority is available for these services for 2021. Kurzian Associates and the city have conferred and prepared an amendment to the contract for an increased scope of services and associated fee increases before the council. Before the council for approval is the amendment to the contract that would add these additional services and the not to exceed amount of the on-call services to contract number C zero three six dash two zero. And it would be increased by $15,000 to a total of $30,000. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute amendment number one to contract number C zero three six dash two zero with Kurzian Associates for on-call professional materials testing, inspection and geotechnical services in the amount of $15,000 for a total amended contract amount of $30,000.
Councilmember Lucarelli.
I move to adopt resolution number zero three one dash two one, authorizing the mayor to execute amendment number one to contract number C zero three six dash two zero with Kurzian and Associates for on-call professional materials testing, inspection and geotechnical services in the amount of 15,000 for a total amended contract amount of $30,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Lucarelli, second by Councilmember Gattari. Mr. Dorsey, just, I think this is correct, but I just want to confirm it. It is, it is an on-call contract and it is, the amount is doubling. But it's only, the contract amount up to is doubling, but we will only pay what we need as we request service, case by case.
It's a time and materials as needed. And so it's for all of our city capital improvement projects like McCormick Pump Station number two. The.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's an on-call, you've confirmed what I believe is that it's an on-call and we've got, we're increasing it because we've got so many more projects going on and will likely use this dollar amount and don't want to bump into the top end of the contract. Yes, okay. Question, other questions for Mr. Dorsey or comments?
And we had a number of projects already that drew down the reserve.
All right, you'll be voting on the approval of a contract amendment with Kurzian and Associates. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is passed. We're to item E, adoption of a resolution authorizing the surplus of city equipment. This is Chief Brown. You don't get many.
Another surplusing. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So assets of the city that are no longer usable are no longer a value to the city or are surplus to city needs may be removed from the city ownership, sold or in any other way disposed with a declaration of surplus by the city council. This right to surplus, or excuse me, this right to dispose of surplus equipment extends to firearms purchased for use by the city's police department that surplus to the department's current needs. Consistent with RCW thirty-five A dot one one dot zero one zero, surplus assets may be disposed of in a variety of ways, including but not limited to disposal, auction, intergovernmental transfer or commercial sale. The city's police department has identified firearms that are surplus the department's need. Authorized by the council, these surplus firearms will be disposed of via trade-in with a local vendor. Money from the sale of this surplus property will be held as store credit by the purchaser. Department intends to use this credit to purchase necessary items to train the city's peace officers. So our recommendation is the approval of a resolution declaring certain property surplus and authorizing its disposition.
Councilmember Rosa Pepe.
I'm Mr. Mayor, I'm to approve a resolution declaring certain equipment surplus and authorizing its disposition.
Oh, second.
Motion by Councilmember Rosa Pepe, a second by Councilmember Clausen. Any discussion or questions? I think it's pretty straightforward.
Thank you.
All right, you'd be voting on the resolution to authorize a surplus of cer- certain city equipment. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution passes. All right, we are to item F, approval of the 2021 Comprehensive Plan Amendment docket. Mr. Bond.
Yes, thank you. Before you tonight is the 2021 Comprehensive Plan Amendment docket. And if you'll recall, the state law only allows us to amend our comprehensive plan once a year, except for a couple of exceptions such as adoption of a subarea plan. And in our local municipal code, we have set an April 30th deadline for adopting the docket for the items that the planning commission will be considering in a given year. So before you tonight, we have listed a handful of amendments that are initiated by the city. We have one amendment initiated by an applicant and I'll briefly go through the proposed amendments for 2021. The first city text amendment is the update to the six-year transportation improvement program as well as the 20-year transportation improvement program. Those are adopted by reference in appendix B of the comprehensive plan. We also propose to adopt the new water system plan and general sewer plan into appendix B of the comprehensive plan. We have a totally new water system plan that is just about worked its way through the Department of Ecology, our Department of Health approval process and the general sewer plan. If you'll remember, we amended last year before we had adjusted our CFCs. So we want to make sure those references get included in our comprehensive plan. Next, the city hall space analysis is proposed to be included in the comprehensive plan by reference to be shown on appendix B of the comprehensive plan. We also plan to update the capital facilities plan for the city and we're adding a handful of projects that are, are in budget discussions to the plan. The parks element is proposed to be repealed and replaced by the new parks and recreation plan, which actually we will be taking to the land use committee this week. And so while the, the final draft parks plan isn't quite ready for release yet, it will be as we take it through the planning commission adoption process. Other text amendments include updates to the utilities element, both table seven point one and seven dash two. Those are the sewer and water CIPs, capital improvement programs, which are being updated. The, one of the amendments to the capital facilities element is that this South Kitsap Community Event Center project that we have been working on designing, we need to actually include that as a project in our capital facility plan. And so we're proposing to do so at this time. Another change is that our appendix B refers to a 1987 Blackjack Creek Comprehensive Management Plan. And there is a new Blackjack Creek watershed assessment that replaced the old plan. And so we are updating the reference to that, that watershed planning document. And then finally, the land use element, we have a number of just general housekeeping amendments. When we adopted the Ruby Creek Subarea Plan last year, we, we noticed that there were a few references left in the land use element that needed to get cleaned up and a few other graphics and figures that now have been amended by other actions and we just, we need to make a few corrections there. I also noted that there was a city-initiated map amendment and it only involves one property and we thought we were correcting this property last year, but then we heard from the property owner who was very unhappy with the change. Last year, we had identified this property as being zoned inconsistently with the comprehensive plan. So we corrected the zoning map. However, that property owner didn't find out about it until it was too late and wanted their, the zoning that they had and actually wanted us to change the comprehensive plan to match the zoning rather than the other way around. So we are, we are proposing to reverse what we did last year that we thought we were cleaning up. And it is possible if the downtown subarea plan is adopted prior to the annual process, this is also part of the downtown subarea planning changes. And so it may be taken care of and, and just drop off of the docket as we work our way through the process. Finally, we did receive one application for a land use map amendment. We're calling it the HE map amendment. And this is near the China Sun Restaurant on Bethel. There's a large 40 or so acre property there and it is bisected by a wetland. So the front half of the property is commercial heavy. The rear part of the property, I believe, is commercial mixed use. They are seeking a zoning change on that rear half of the property because it isn't actually accessible from Bethel. You have to get in from Salmon Berry to get there. And so they're looking to do another, I think they're seeking R three, are, actually they're currently R one and they're going to R three. So that is the extent of our amendments for this year and the staff recommendation is that the city council vote to approve the 2021 Comprehensive Plan Amendment docket pursuant to POMC twenty point zero four zero six zero as presented.
Councilor Chang.
I move to approve the 2021 Comprehensive Plan Amendment docket pursuant to the Port Orchard Municipal Code twenty dot oh four dot zero six zero as presented.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Chang, second by Councilmember Lucarelli. Any questions or comments to, for Mr. Bond? Councilor Chang.
I don't know much Mandarin at all. However, I would say that the the map amendment he is actually pronounced huh? I don't know the applicant would be there, but they might be impressed to be pronounced that way.
I appreciate the heads up. I was not aware of that. On a related note, I also learned recently from a neighbor that Figley Road is actually pronounced Figgly. So, but I don't, I think that's going to be harder to catch on.
Councilor Rosa Pepe.
I'd say thanks to Nick and his team for getting all this work done and ready to go to the state. It's been awesome.
Okay, other comments or questions?
I'll just second what, what Jay had to say.
Just about everybody is bobbing for air. So. All right, you'll be voting on the approval of the 2021 Comprehensive Plan Amendment docket. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the amendments have been approved. We're to our last business item, approval of the April 13th council meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of our regular meeting on April 13th as presented.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kichardi and a second by Councilmember Clausen. We will have two abstentions, Councilmember Deener and Councilmember Rosa Pepe. So all in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And two abstentions? All right, we're to, I have no discussion items. Council committees. Economic development, you met on May 10th, or you're going to meet on May 10th?
Yeah, we met earlier this month. That report's been given, so next meeting, May 10th.
Yep. I see that now. Utilities, I believe your meeting was canceled and your next one is on May 18th. Is that not correct?
It is.
Sounds correct to me, too. Land use, you're meeting May 5th. You haven't met either. And.
And we're, it says listed May 12th, but it's May 5th.
It's May 5th, that's right. Chimes and lights, have you had a meeting since our, your last report?
We did actually, and we just took care of some logistics for the event, which is not going to be too terribly much of an event. But we are going to skip May meeting and we'll come back in June for our next meeting. June 21st.
And Councilboard Clausen, I think you gave a finance committee report at our last council meeting. And then our, your next meeting is on May 18th. And Beck's gone, but transportation met this evening. One of the things I recall from our meeting, when they got a bet, you guys, they were given a presentation on alternatives for the Lincoln Roundabout. And the, they're going to bring two of those three recommendations to the full council. One requires additional money that we don't have, but it could become a future project. There was a desire and we'll do it later on this year. Chris has got a number of new terminology that I've been using a bit and some of the other council members on that committee are familiar with, but just to bring everybody up to speed, what crack sealing and chip sealing is and what a complete overlay is and, and at a high level where we're going to be performing some of that work. So Chris is going to come back and give, give some of the, some of the information that the utility or the, excuse me, the transportation committee has gotten and so that we're all on the same playing same, same level of information. has gotten. And so we're all on the same playing, same, same level of information and when these terms are used that we all understand them. So what I miss future grants, I think Chris identified some future grants that he intends to pursue. I think that's, yeah, most of the meeting was, was put to Bethel, to the Bethel Roundabout project. So good, good concepts are being shared. Let's see, I'm not even a committee member, but I was there. Let's see here, sewer advisory committee, looks like May nineteenth.
Yes.
And I don't think lodging tax is met.
And. Will be up October.
Okay, and I'm gonna save my outside agencies for my mayor's report. So department heads, it's Chief Brown, I think you got something to tell us.
I do, I've got three good things. So first is just to remind everybody on council and if anybody's listening, we do have our town hall on Thursday evening. It'll be at six o'clock. So that'll be, that'll be good. Looking forward to that.
And that's a virtual town hall on Zoom.
Yes, a virtual town hall, that is correct. I've just kind of accepted that as, as par for the course for about everything we're doing right now. I also wanted to give everybody a heads up where we're at with hiring. So we do have one, Robert Luke, who we've already told you guys about, but he starts the academy next Wednesday, which is very exciting. And we're working to get other people in the pipe, but one thing I wanted to share with the council is that almost person during our chief's interviews, which occur before we determine if someone is going to be in the background. They are all talking about the strategic plan that we were able to put together and that's part of why they're excited to come to the city is that they can see the growth that we're getting ready to go through and, and they can see what the department's doing and, and they like that. So that's been a very good recruiting tool. And then finally, just a quick update on accreditation. So we did start the formal process last week. We have a mentor from Bremerton that's been working with us on that and we're about ninety-seven percent complete with all of our proofs. There's a hundred and thirty-seven proofs and the last three percent will be done by the end of the month when we take some items over for disposal in Spokane. So we're, we're doing really good stuff. So I appreciate the council's continued support. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Dorsey, anything to share?
I do not.
All right.
Other than you got a plaque on your desk.
Yeah, that's in my mayor's report. I was going to talk about that. Well, Mr. Bond?
Yeah, so two announcements. First of all, we did get the building official job posted and we already have two applicants that appear to be qualified and hopefully we will get several more to choose from with our first review in another week and a half. The second announcement is that the land use committee will be reviewing our buildable lands, land capacity analysis at their meeting next week. And I wanted to let the city council know that we've, we've gone through the analysis twice and we have significantly more capacity now than we did eight years ago. And that has a lot to do with some of the zoning changes we, we brought forward in twenty nineteen, which increased the, the ability for development to occur in the city. My, my worry about this information is the potential pressure that it may put on our urban growth area. And so it, I don't have any indications from the county yet on, on what the total picture of buildable lands countywide looks like. But if you know people who have thought about annexing into the city, you know, I, I think that, that it may be time to start encouraging some annexations because there could be pressure put on our UGA to, to make some cuts to it again in coming years. And it's something we'll want to monitor very closely between now and twenty twenty-four when we adopt our comprehensive plan. But we, the, the, the land capacity is, is pretty considerable compared to where it was in twenty sixteen. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Ms. Archer?
Nothing to report this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Janine, what's new in the clerk's office besides it's just you?
Being, staying very busy, but don't really have anything to report. Thank you.
Mr. Crocker?
Uh, nothing to report.
And I don't know why I went to the directors. I skipped the mayor's report. I know Mr. Gattari never wants to hear a mayor's report at eight twenty-five at night, but I got one for you anyway. So I won't dive too deep into my first item, which is the city hall repairs. I talked, I touched on this at the retreat that Mark and I met with the Rice, Fergus Miller, and we're going to make an assumption that all the sheeting underneath the siding is bad and which will drive up our engineer's estimate and we hope we're wrong and that will help us control change orders so that we're doing a deduct versus an increase that we don't control. So the community center, excited to report that we, I've got confirmation, we got the one point two million dollars from the state capital budget. And a huge thank you to Senator Randall for her work on this because it was solely her, her efforts that got us those money. And we've got councilmember Gattari and I've been in communication and had a number of meetings with Kitsap Bank and I think you're within the next couple of weeks, we will probably have a purchase and sale for the, to consider with the full council. We talked about adding, so I went, I was out to public works, I mentioned this to transportation today and shared with them that, that the council would like to see if our revenue continues the way it is, that when we do our mid-year review, that we're going to add another million dollars just to street preservation and maintenance and the Tony Lang and Chris, Chris are foremen, their eyes got kind of big and Tony, of course, immediately asked for four more staff members and they said, that's not going to happen. So, you know, I some of this work is going to be done by outside vendors, but we did come to a very good conclusion that we should probably add a couple more summer hires and in particular have them trained as flaggers. And so when we're doing these street operations, our guys can actually do the, 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 the heavy work. And so, you know, at fifteen dollars an hour for a few months, I think it's, it's very, adds some good capacity and so Noah and I will be talking about that and what we need to do as far as potential budget, budget amendment or not to, to cover that. We might have enough existing capacity from unfilled positions. Tremont, Mark alluded to an award. I turned my background off. This is for our, I wish you guys were here and we're passing around the room. Our project of the year award to the city of Port Orchard for the Washington State chapter of the American Public Works Association. So since I have, you can see all my little awards on the wall over there. I'm missing one because I lost for once in the fantasy football league, so the plaque isn't on the wall. So it'll fit nicely there until I get my other plaque back. So, let's see. Just Nick alluded to the building official position being posted. And so that full job description, as I'm required to report to you, has been created and the job posting is online. And I get disappointing news here, the fourteen oh six dollars that we were trying to help housing Kitsap with, we learned the state statute for these funds requires that the median household income be no greater than sixty percent. Well, these people have to qualify for mortgages and so the, the, the criteria for that program is at eighty percent. They wouldn't qualify for the mortgages at sixty percent. So unfortunately, we're not going to be able to help Dean in that manner. I was giving a presentation, though, the Home Builders Association more than a week ago and brought this topic up and I know of a local builder, Bob Disney, who has reached out and appears to be ready to lend a hand. He says, I've had a very good year and sometimes you need to help others out. And I thought that was very admirable of him to say that. I had the, I sent out an email earlier today or recapping, or maybe it was yesterday, they kind of blurred together. The highlights from the retreat, I hope everybody saw that in their email. The full recap will be, be done by our consultant Joy. And I had a unique opportunity last week, too. I got, I was, I was because of my position on the AWC board, Peter King, the executive director, reached out to me to represent the city, small cities nationally. And so there was a conference call from Gene Sterling, Spurling of the White House staff and they were writing the rules for the American Recovery Plan. And, and so it was a unique opportunity. There's eight, eight cities selected, or it made mayors nationally selected and, and it was a fabulous opportunity to, to talk about our needs and it was interesting just how similar and vastly different some of the needs are out there. So it was a great, great, great opportunity to participate. And that's all I have in my mayor's report. We are to our second citizen comment period. Randy or Janine, has anybody shown up to comment?
No, just still Mr. Lane.
Okay. And anything for the good of the order this evening? Hearing none, I will officially say that this meeting is adjourned at eight thirty-one this evening.
Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Bye-bye.